So at this time, I call to order the February 22nd, 2022 work session of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board. For the record, I'd like to indicate which board members are in attendance for the work session. Mr. Evans is not moving on. Ms. Vitter Smith, are you available?
I'm here.
Thank you. Mrs. McGrath. I'll come back to Mrs. McGrath. Dr. Norene.
I am here.
Thank you. I know Ms. Smith is not able to join us for the work session. Moving on, Dr. Thor.
Here.
Ms. Nguyen.
Present.
I'm present. I'll come back. Present, obviously, Ree Sullivan. And moving to then Mrs. McGrath, are you present for the work session? All right. At this time, I don't know if that's a computer glitch or if she's not present, so I'll move on from that, noting that five board members have indicated being present. Today, we are providing provided an update regarding employee group structures. And with that, unless we have a tune to carry us into the work session, perhaps you have one, Dr. Gonzalez. I'm going to ask you to introduce our presenters and set the tone in song with the tune. Say that fast.
Okay, President Sullivan, members of the board, CEC and guests. Off the top of my head, I'm sorry, I don't have a tune that I can share this evening. So give me a moment, maybe I'll come back on that one. But Eric really impressed us last week. And so maybe he he'll do this while I'm doing this introduction. First, I'd like to point out that this is a this is an agenda item that belongs to myself and Dr. Lozinski. And secondly, I'd just like to provide you, as I always do, an opening to to set the the purpose and tone for the the session that we're about to have here. I'm sorry, I'm trying to click through a couple of things. First, we want to provide an update on the status of the prior board resolution regarding the employee groups. These were things that were created, I think, maybe going on now a few years. And one of my goals in the chancellor's goals that that were created about 10 or 11 months ago was finding ways to make Maricopa a great place to work. And I recognize that our employee groups are certainly an important element in achieving that goal. So we've been working actively to achieve that goal by reviewing the work in the areas of shared governance, employee engagement, and ensure that employees feel valued. And of course, as we commit ourselves to continuous quality improvement of all that we do, today is an opportunity to do that as well. So I'll be introducing Dr. Lozinski and Dr. Kelly. They're going to provide an update. They're going to give you what our current thinking is. And then the provost would also will also be providing a recommendation in this work session. And then we'll we'll give an opportunity for employee group leaders to provide some brief remarks and to be available for Q and A. And I may have also left out that Mr. Bowman is also a presenter this evening. So with that said, I will turn it over to either Dr. Lozinski or Dr. Kelly. I'm not sure which one is going to go next.
That'll be me, Dr. Gonzalez, and good evening or good late afternoon, everybody. My name is Eric Lozinski, and I'm here tonight to help us talk through some of our employee group updates. But heard the request for some songs, and so my instant messaging and chat was blown up there. So two suggestions came through, one from Journey, Don't Stop Believin', which I think is a wonderful thing for us to think of very positively. And the other one, I had the opportunity this morning of engaging with Dr. Cyan Proctor in another meeting and made me think of the Frank Sinatra song and theme that we have, Fly Me to the Moon. So I think both are somewhat important or relevant to our conversations here. But I think Don't Stop Believin' has the right tenor and tone for our evening tonight. So with that, if we can advance to the next slide, that would be great. So our objective for this evening is to provide provide an overall update on our district's employee groups, reviewing the charge from 2019, when our governing board established some structures regarding our employee groups. And so our agenda this evening will review that charge. We'll go through the structure as well, and Dr. Kelly will be assisting me with that. We'll talk about then our current state, providing some input and insight into that as well, and I'll be sharing that. Then some proposed next steps that Dr. Gonzalez alluded to. But most importantly will be the two final aspects of the evening. One, we'll have an opportunity to listen to our respective employee group leaders, as noted on the slide, as well as then an opportunity for our governing board members to ask questions as well. So our goal will be to spend the first 20 to 25 minutes, give or take, on some of the presentation materials, and then leave the remaining 25, 30 minutes to then the employee group feedback, if you will, and observations, along with questions from our governing board members. Next slide, please, Elsa. So again, just a quick refresher regarding the charge. The Board Policy 2.2 of our treatment of faculty and staff outlines some of our chancellor limitations, but in particular speaks to the written policy manuals for all employee groups are adopted through a collaborative process and that they are adopted that govern a fair and equitable workplace, including those related to equal employment opportunity, et cetera. So just note that this work is is within the spirit of 2.2. And then building upon that, in 2019, members of this governing board established a board resolution, which was very clear in stating that stakeholders must have a voice and an effective structure for representation. And with that was then created the Faculty Administration Collaborative Team, or affectionately known as FACT. And there were some various amendments or adjustments made to that over time later on in 2019 as well. Some some key significant takeaways from that resolution, there were many great aspects of that. One was the residential faculty policies were renamed to the Faculty Agreement, which is in place today. And also was the inclusion of adjunct faculty into the FACT process and into the Faculty Agreement. Additionally, the resolution also established or reestablished the classified employee group or representative bodies that are operating in parallel function to FACT. So again, that was just a brief summary of that charge and and then the resolution that was provided in 2019. Next slide, please, Elsa. And with this, I will hand it over to Dr. Georgetta Kelly, who will provide greater insight into our current structures. And with that, Dr. Kelly.
Yes, thank you so much, Dr. Lozinski. In reference to the employee designations and categories, we have classified and nonclassified. We have full-time, part-time, and contingent workers. Our employee groups are governed through the following policies and represented structures. We have one group represented and recognized through an independent association. And the independent associations are typically nonprofits, 501(c) organizations, and have a membership that exceeds one half of the employee group representatives. The internal employee group councils are created by each employee group in consultation, of course, with the administration and the administrative approval process. Both forms of representation represent the interests of employees within their respective groups, even if an employee does not join an association. Next slide, Elsa. So also part of the structure are job requirements. Our residential faculty have primary responsibility for such fundamental areas as curriculum, subject matter, and methods of instruction, research, faculty status, and integrated student support structures. Residential faculty must meet all classes as scheduled, including comprehensive course preparation and assessment and/or professional services to students. They hold a minimum of five scheduled student support hours weekly and participate in department, division, college, and/or district activities, including course assessments and/or program development, while also meeting the requirements of the faculty evaluation plan and/or the peer assistance and review process. Next slide, Elsa. For adjunct faculty, they also must meet all classes as scheduled, including comprehensive course preparation and assessment and/or professional services to students. Please keep in mind, some of our adjunct faculty members are also members of the classified staff employee group as they service full-time members of the Maricopa Community College District. For employee groups, their job requirements vary, of course, based on the assigned scope of work for the particular job as indicated within the position description. Next slide, Elsa. The next element of the structure is how the groups are represented. Residential faculty are represented by the Maricopa Community Colleges Faculty Association, an independent association, and the Faculty Executive Council, which is an internal employee group council. The adjunct faculty are represented by the adjunct faculty employee group and function based on a set of bylaws presented to and approved by the administration. Also, please note that the adjunct, the former adjunct faculty association was dissolved in 2020. The classified staff are represented by employee representation. They are viewed as an internal employee group council and again, function based on a set of bylaws presented to and approved by the administration. Next slide, Elsa. The policy framework for each of the group is as follows. The Maricopa Faculty Association engages in the consensus-based fact process to recommend policy to the chancellor affecting residential and adjunct faculty. The adjunct faculty employee group, which is an internal council, became part of the residential faculty policy manual, in fact, in 2019, as mentioned earlier in the presentation. Policy elements do differ for part-time contingent faculty versus full-time staff. In the past, adjunct faculty guidelines were set through the adjunct faculty handbook, similar to temporary staff. For the employee representation, they are also an internal council and engage in the staff policy collaboration model to recommend policy to the chancellor affecting classified staff. Temporary staff are not members of the classified group. They are considered nonclassified staff and operate through a set of guidelines. Next slide, Elsa. Just to update you in reference to the staff policy collaboration model, classified staff employee group reset occurred in 2020 through a set of bylaw. The elections were held in 2020 and delayed until 2021 due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The staff policy collaboration team was created in 2021 and made up of representatives of the classified staff employee group. The initial kickoff occurred in January 22, and meetings are underway. Next slide, Elsa. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Lozinski.
Thank you so much, Dr. Kelly, and I appreciate that overview of the structure and the current state regarding our employee groups. And then regarding FACT, I want to take a little bit of a deeper dive here and present some of the really updates in the current state, if you will, from this past year. So for, as we're all aware, or as I guess I'll make you aware, weekly meetings have been held with FACT this entire academic year. And within that, as you know, FACT is a nine-member group, including representation from residential faculty, adjunct faculty, and also administration. Towards the end of the fall semester, our Faculty Association President, Dr. Sasha Radisich, he sent an email request to our chancellor requesting really new thinking regarding FACT, which is creating a separate, two separate groups from the existing FACT. One of which is to focus on residential faculty and its relationship with Maricopa, if you will, and the other is then a separate group comprised of adjunct faculty focusing on those interests of adjunct faculty. So Chancellor Gonzalez then asked me to take a deeper dive or a deeper look into this issue and to examine it a bit further. So with that, here's how we proceed, or here's how I proceed in that moment. First of all, we had two meetings with the respective leadership teams, meaning that of Faculty Association leadership, along with the adjunct employee group leadership. And we had those two meetings, and in attendance as well were myself and Dr. Kelly and and other related folks connected with FACT to just talk through this request and to get a sense of of really the respective interests, if you will. Additionally, I asked each of the leader leaders from the respective two groups, both Dr. Train and Dr. Radisich, to provide position papers on their positions or their stance, if you will, whether to dissolve and reconstitute FACT. And both were very professional and and very timely in saying their responses back to me. And I believe those were provided to you as part of our board materials. I then also took a few additional steps, one of which is I reached out to the administrative team members of FACT and just gathered their input in a verbal, you know, verbal interview, if you will, or your verbal conversation. Then also I had a chance to connect with the FACT facilitator, who was also part of the meetings this academic year, and just to garner her input from her observations regarding the process this academic year. So after my review of of those materials, the respective position papers and the conversations that I had, I did provide to Chancellor Gonzalez a recommendation at the end of January, which is indeed to dissolve FACT into two separate groups for it to be reestablished then, excuse me, to dissolve FACT and then reestablish it into two separate groups. Primarily speaking, my my rationale for that related to a couple, couple key points, but mainly was just the distinct and unique interest of each of the groups and their relationship with the Maricopa Community Colleges as employees. But secondly, and I think even more importantly, was to provide that high level of value and attention to each of the employee groups so that way we're valuing their respective interests, and we're also doing our best to elevate their interests with administration so we can meet their respective needs. And with that, Elsa, if you can go ahead and advance the next slide. Again, just to share with you, again, in the spirit of transparency and full context, some of the highlights that were that were from the respective position papers. From our Faculty Association, again, there was a sense of the sharply distinct goals and priorities and different interests. There was a a sense of if we don't make that structural change now, that there could be some challenges to significant progress in the future. And that maybe the timeliness of decisions or the timeliness of the actions coming forward, it seems that 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 may have been challenged throughout this academic year. Elsa, next slide, please. And some of the highlights from our adjunct faculty employee group position paper, if you will, is that again, that the the feeling or sentiment that instructional services must be equal in all matters. So that way, there's not that diminished experience that that maybe students could experience from receiving instruction. In addition, this is in alignment with the the interim chancellor's goals or Chancellor Gonzalez's goals of our enhanced working relationship and and the culture, the culture improvement that we're focusing on, and this supports that. And again, the another highlight from the position paper from adjunct faculty was the connection or relationship of this work to the work of the Center for Excellence and that this is valuing that our concept and belief in district-wide diversity, equity, and inclusion. So with that, if we can actually skip ahead two slides, Elsa, we'll then come back to the next one. That'd be great. Additionally, I had an opportunity to engage with our our legal team, and and I'd like to have them and have David Bowman share what what he sort of offered as some other things we should be considering as well regarding risk and liabilities with our current state. So with that, I will turn it over to David Bowman.
Thank you, Dr. Lozinski. Good afternoon, members of the board. The in looking at the the current state of of FACT and the inclusion of adjunct faculty with residential faculty in the one agreement, it does raise some legal exposure to the district in terms of a risk of of lawsuits by adjunct faculty alleging discrimination, wage and hour violations, and retirement and benefits issues, as well as possible lawsuits by students alleging Title IX violations, discrimination that arise from inconsistent practices of adjunct hiring, performance management, and separations. Now, the chancellor does have an obligation under Board Policy 2.4 to not cause or allow any development of fiscal jeopardy or noncompliance with local, state, or federal laws. The current lack of clarity in the the FACT document, the Faculty Agreement, as it relates to adjuncts, their employment status at will versus term to term, and regards to performance management, as well as procedures on on separations, as distinct from the due process that's accorded to to residential faculty. So the lack of clarity there does raise some issues, and and it's actually in the best interest, not only of the district, but also of adjunct faculty for there to be clearer policies relating to their employment and to provide them a an opportunity to have a unified voice for adjunct faculty in making recommendations to the board for adopting clear policies specific to adjuncts. So in furtherance of this board policy, the board does have an opportunity to to direct and adopt clear policies applicable to adjuncts separate from the policy framework for residential faculty, which could mitigate against these legal risks. And I'll pass it back to Dr. Lozinski.
Thanks so much. And if you slide with perfect, thank you so much. So our goal today was just collectively share with you, if you will, a state of the state whenever it relates to employee group structure and their work thus far this year. Also, our goal was to share some full transparency regarding some of the communications specifically related to our FACT process and share with you the due diligence that was occurring to evaluate that recommendation that came through. Upon the conclusion of this work session, in the upcoming days and weeks and and through conversations, we do believe that a recommendation is going to come forward with a presentation of a resolution, which would indeed be dissolving the FACT structure and then looking at this, creating a a new structure that still meets the interests of ensuring that stakeholders have a voice and an effective structure for representation for both residential and adjunct faculty, and of course, our employee group structure too, that is not within FACT, but part of this overarching conversation. And again, that we are doing all that we can do to ensure that we address employee group involvement and policy recommendations. As I stated at the beginning of this, though, really the important part is that we have an opportunity to listen and hear from our respective employee group leaders and allow adequate time for our board members to ask questions or comment regarding what's been shared today on the overarching employee group structure. So Elsa, if you would, please advance to the next slide. First, thank you. For sake of time, too, to be very honest and clear, I did I did offer to each of our representative groups anywhere between three to five minutes per group, just to offer some of their insights and feedback regarding observations from this current year and their reflections regarding our current employee group structure. So I know we did spend, or I did, and others and Georgetta Kelly spent a little time today focusing on FACT. But again, let's make sure we were thinking of this holistically with our employee group structure as well. So with that context in mind, I'd first like to turn it over to our co-presidents of our employee representative group, and that is Anna Chandler and Shannon Manje. So Anna and Shannon, please take it away. And again, if we find we're running a little long on the time, you might hear myself pop in and just kind of say we need to wrap this up somewhat soon. So with that, I'll turn it over to Anna and Shannon.
Thank you, Provost, President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, CEC, and colleagues. We are happy to bring forth the progress of the employee representation body that supports and advocates for the staff of Maricopa. Before we go into our successes, some of the historical items that have helped shape us into the representing body we are today. We were initiated in 2019 by the governing board and was asked to provide representation from all 10 colleges in our district office. This is where the brainstorming occurred to find a method that would help represent employees and bring forth our voice in a collaborative and progressive manner. Through this process, we have advanced from the Employee Group Organization Council to an interim role, as we were heavily affected by the pandemic, to now employ representation. With the leadership of two co-presidents, a vice president, a senate body representation, and three council-serving are exempt, nonexempt, and sworn officers. With our successes, we could not be more proud of all the hard work representatives have committed to bringing Maricopa forward and supporting staff across the district with collaboration and support of many leaders and faculty. Some of our highlighted successes, as we've grown and transitioned and moved forward, we've obtained a seat here to speak with you at the governing board, updating you and providing feedback as to how employee representation is being affected across the district. We also provide all of classified staff a monthly newsletter, updating them and engaging them in what's going on within the district, both on a professional level and also just making sure that they know representation is here to serve for them. We've been a part of internal committees that are helping support with policy continuity communication, and we also have an elections and onboarding process. We have worked very closely with our HR in order to support strategic compensation plan, vacation buyback program, and COVID-19 essential worker stipend. Our collaboration with HR and faculty have really been momentous as we've been able to build a healthier relationship for our trust to be built and us to move forward for employees. We've also built a good relationship with DAC and our affinity groups, making sure there is awareness and engagement in what we find is important within the district. We've also had district-level committee representation. We are a part of CEC in order to help champion shared governance and make sure that we are involved in all conversations. And last but not least, certainly, our creation of the Staff Policy Collaboration Team. Employee representation realized that we needed to be stronger in our policies in order to help move us forward and have things set in stone. And so with the Staff Policy Collaboration Team, our initiative is to review, update, and strengthen policies for staff employees. It is co-chaired by Human Resources and Employee Representation with membership of those who are expert matters in their field. We're really excited to not only present proposals in the near future with our policy collaboration team, but just being able to be transparent and collaborative along the way will be really important for us in the months months to come. Some of the things that we're thinking of future-wise is our strategic plan, as we do want to be able to provide detail step by steps of how we function and how we help to make decisions and support employees. And so those are some of our processes, successes, and just what we have found to be working for us as we're moving forward. Thank you, Dr. Lozinski.
Thank you so much, Ms. Chandler. I really appreciate the update and also your leadership this past year and all you've done to help help our employees and help Maricopa advance. So thanks for that. Next, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Sasha Radisich, who will provide some observations and and feedback on behalf of our residential faculty.
Good afternoon, everyone. Maricopa's residential faculty want to focus their efforts on providing high-quality teaching in order to maximize student learning. That's it, really. That's their passion, and that's how they want to spend their time. In service to that goal, the Faculty Association's purpose is to maintain an environment that allows our faculty to keep their attention fixed on promoting student success. That's why the association strives to protect academic freedom, to promote shared governance, and to improve Maricopa's working conditions. When we handle the background details, the faculty don't have to waste their efforts on them. Rather than fighting organizational battles or breaking down structural obstacles, our faculty have the freedom to spend all their attention on helping every one of our students achieve their goals, knowing that the Faculty Association is working with our administration to handle those other issues. For the Faculty Association to fulfill this purpose, it needs to have a say in how our district functions. In higher education, we use the term shared governance to describe the process for allowing employee input to influence the organization. Higher education's unique goal of creating and spreading knowledge can only succeed if decisions are made in collaboration with the experts on the topic. Note that shared governance does not mean that everyone has input into every decision. We wouldn't expect the maintenance and operations staff to weigh in on the textbook choice for an early American literature class, and we wouldn't expect English residential faculty to weigh in on the choice of winter seed for the lawns. Shared governance means that decisions are made with input from the employees who will be most affected by the decision and who have the most relevant training and expertise to make the decision. Shared governance is always a work in progress. We learn how to do it by engaging in the process, and over time, we constantly modify our approach in order to improve it. The Faculty Administration Collaborative Team is a good example of this process of continuous improvement. When FACT began, its purpose was to compile all of our relevant policies into a new combined employee contract for the residential and adjunct faculty. It was a rush job, but the team performed admirably, cobbling together 122 pages of rules and regulations to reflect our current business practices. Now, having successfully completed that task, FACT then turned to a new goal, modifying our existing policies to meet the changing needs of our organization. My apologies, I have a dog. Here, FACT stopped being successful because structurally, it no longer followed the shared governance model. Since the workplace environment for full-time, tenure-eligible employees differs so significantly from that of part-time, at-will employees, every issue being discussed had some people at the table who lacked the training, expertise, or relevance to participate in the decision-making process. As a result, progress ground to a halt, and FACT stopped performing well for our organization. Clearly, it was time to modify our process. When this year's gridlock made it clear that the current incarnation of FACT no longer meets the district's shared governance needs, Chancellor Gonzalez asked Provost Lashinsky to find a solution that will improve our current system. Having heard today from Provost Lashinsky and the others, I find that we remain confident in our district's commitment to a collaborative approach to governance that gives everyone a voice while maintaining the pace of change required by today's rapidly evolving educational and economic environment. Right now, FACT is trying to have two completely different conversations at the same time. But remember the greatest lesson learned from the Industrial Revolution: efficiency requires specialization. The proposed separation is a move to specialize. By separating the conversation about adjunct working conditions from the one about residential working conditions, we give both conversations the focus and attention that they need in order to move forward. This change will help Maricopa to keep up with the pace of change in today's world and in turn will allow our faculty to always keep their educational processes current and relevant. At the end of the day, that's what our students deserve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Dr. Radisich, and again, appreciate your leadership and your role leading our Faculty Association, and please feed that dog dinner. It's after 5:30, could be hungry. All right, and then to continue with the observations and our feedback as well, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Terry Train, who is our adjunct faculty employee group president. Dr. Train?
Thank you very much this evening. We appreciate the time on the agenda. President Sullivan, members of the governing board, interim Chancellor Gonzalez, and all invited guests, thank you for the opportunity to provide information related to the adjunct faculty employee group and the request before you provided by our residential faculty colleagues concerning their request for the dissolution of the FACT committee. As you know, our employee group represents over 4,000 adjunct faculty, who this semester are teaching 49.3% of all classes district-wide. We do understand that you have been provided with our full three-page position paper previously that we were asked to author in response to FEC's request. I have served and had the privilege to do so on the district's FACT team continuously since August of 2019, attending every meeting held for that purpose. We understand that our residential faculty colleagues wish to disband the FACT committee and to return to the previous meet-and-confer process, where they work individually with district administration on their matters of concern. However, we do not support this change and respectfully seek the permanent continuation of the FACT committee, although we understand for Mr. Bowman, there does need to be additional narrative and refinement for legal reasons. The FACT committee design and implementation is the first time that effective formal collaboration between residential and adjunct faculty has ever occurred within our district. It provides the opportunity for authentic, sensitive conversations intended to result in decisions that are in the best interest of our collective mission of student success, as well as the district's development of a competitive profile in Arizona within higher education. And it serves as a process where transparent and ethics-based outcomes can be collaboratively designed. Please note that adjunct faculty are not responsible for, nor have we caused any delays in the resolution of FACT agenda items or interests for our own residential colleagues during this year. In fact, a review of all meeting content and agenda items and task execution dating back to 2019 will show that we have deferred repeatedly upon request to prioritize residential concerns over AFA concerns throughout the last 2.5 years. As was mentioned previously by Dr. Radisich, the single faculty agreement adopted and approved by the governing board in February of 2021, in fact, contains 122 pages of collaborative narrative. The narrative impacts all faculty. The articles contain information that impact adjunct faculty in a variety of ways, and hence, we're thankful for the opportunity to have our voices and our interests heard by all parties in all of our joint meetings of the nine-member committee. We do understand fully that the current issue that is before our FACT committee of a new tier professional development compensation structure has caused concern for residential faculty. This has a potential workload and financial impact for all. However, the most constructive design of a system like this is through real-time, interest-based, problem-solving, FACT committee work. It is not effective to split faculty apart to avoid difficult or challenging conversations. Similarly, we have upcoming conversations around selection, evaluation, performance, and also items around diversity, equity, and inclusion. We fully understand the history that resulted in the design of FACT, including the elimination of meet-and-confer, the extended negative media coverage, the removal of district leadership, involvement of the Higher Ed Learning Commission, and then eventually the FACT committee. We are available to answer any and all questions that the governing board may have about the long-term work of the FACT committee and our perspective as adjunct faculty, and we're open to any additional follow-up with the board beyond even this study session. We are confident that your decision as an elected body about the FACT committee will support what is best for all parties, including and especially our students. Thank you very much for your time on this meeting agenda.
Thank you very much, Dr. Train, and also thank you to your leadership this past academic year and prior, and I know that your time is precious and seeing you have so many meetings that you do, I just appreciate your time and energy with that as well.
You're very welcome.
To summarize then, before we turn it back over to Board President Sullivan, again, just wanted to highlight the overarching nature of our employee group structures, highlight the fact that we have three, if you will, employee groups that are functioning in their manner right now to advance their interests, but always under the under the auspices of shared governance, as well as the goal of advancing our students and our community at large. Within this, though, is the concept of our FACT, the Faculty Agreement, and how it was constituted, and then the request for there to be a separation of two groups. One point to reiterate is, I know, is related to meet-and-confer. Please note that from my perspective, this is not about a return to meet-and-confer necessarily at all. It is more about the separation of the two groups to make sure that we are elevating each of their voices equally. So one group or another may not have to set aside their respective interests for a period of time, so this might allow that to come forward in some manner. So just wanted to summarize in that space. And now with that, I'd like to turn it back over to Board President Sullivan to solicit questions and comments from the respective board members, and then we'll do our best to answer those questions and/or provide any further details as needed. Board President Sullivan?
Thank you, Dr. Lashinsky. And yes, you did a great job on setting the tone. I'd actually like to fly me to the moon, though, so thank you for that. With that, then, board members, we've heard several perspectives on the issue of the recommendation that could evolve into a first reading on a new resolution. And I'd like to remind everyone that when we, the board that had two different board members on this, our seven was constituted a little differently than our seven today, that we did have opportunity to do significant due diligence about the FACT proposal and resolution and understood when we, after doing our due diligence and taking the vote in support of this effort, that we knew that after implementation, that there could be changes as the groups experienced both the challenges and opportunities that the new framing presented. And we wanted to also understand if people ran into gridlock or issues of concerns, how that could be mitigated. So it seems that the time has come for us to reexamine that based on the experience of FACT and what has been some of the challenges along this line, particularly as I listened, and I'm sure my colleagues did as well, to some of the challenges that both the residential faculty and adjunct faculty are facing. So just that's some background for our newer board members. So this is not a surprise that we're at this point today to reconsider some modifications, and particularly, at the time, we didn't have a full understanding of the legal jeopardy or liability concerns that might have been created through that document. So with that, I'm going to move to some Q and A between board members. And Ms. Bitter Smith, I'm going to do my usual and start alphabetically. Do you have any questions or comments?
I don't at the moment, other than to echo what you said for those that are newer to the board, this was very helpful to set the the history and factual background for for me, certainly. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Mrs. McGrath?
I have no questions or comments at this time. Thank you.
Sure, Dr. Narini?
No, no question. Just just want to comment that, you know, it's nice to see that we're able to adapt and and adjust as we as we learn more about the process and things and what's best for the faculty and students and everybody concerned. So thanks for all the work that everyone's doing on this.
Thank you. I again recognize Ms. Smith is not with us this afternoon in the work session, so from that, Dr. Thor?
Thank you. I probably have more comments than I have questions. I, of course, was president of the board in 2019, when these various resolutions and amendments to the resolutions were passed. And in fact, I authored, along with Dana Sarr, the original January 2019 resolution. I want to comment first about the classified employee representation. I was surprised when the proposal was made that all classified employees, including administrators, managers, and supervisors, be in the same employee group as those that they supervise. However, I was more comfortable with the creation of the exempt council and the non-exempt council and public safety. But now, as the group is moving into the Staff Policy Collaboration Team, I'm going to be very interested in seeing whether those, the possibly different interests of administrators, managers, and supervisors will be surfaced. I'm not sure I said that very well, but I think we may start to see, just as we are with residential faculty and adjunct faculty, some different priorities and some different interests. But a year from now, we can talk about that. I I am interested in knowing how well the, you know, it must be 70, 75 people who make up the employee representation. What is the level of attendance and participation of those 70-plus people? Is it really that broad, or is it a smaller group that's actually doing the governance here?
Ms. Manje or Ms. Chandler, can you answer that question?
Yes, ma'am, I can.
Thank you.
No, no problem. And and I think at this point, we're still really learning how to work together with the interim representation that we initially had. We had a very smaller group, and all of those members have continued to work into this third tier through the elections piece. And so we're still adapting to, as all staff are serving students face-to-face or even behind the scenes, but in some modality, or we're still learning how to manage and balance our work job plus representation. We have good attendance. We just want to, and we've talked to our leadership about this, just getting a little bit more supportive, allowing folks to be on committees as we've worked and grown to be a core piece of shared governance. We're we're being spread across the district to make sure that our voices are heard and we're able to advocate for employees. And so our attendance is suitable for the time we're at now, but we are looking to grow, to be more engaged, and have the space and time to really do the best we can for all employees. So hopefully that answers your question.
Okay. Yes, it does. Thank you very much. And I think we certainly recognize how difficult it has been to start a new organization in the middle of a pandemic. So and as I've said to to both of you, I very much appreciate the tone of the presentations that you give and the collaborative spirit that you do convey. I'm thinking back about the decision of the board back in 2019 to combine adjunct faculty and residential faculty together. And I I think our intention was good, that we wanted to recognize all faculty, full-time as well as part-time, and to have as many shared policies as possible. Reflecting back now, I think we may have set up something that was impossible to be successful, and that is because in most situations in which policies represent both residential faculty and adjunct faculty, both groups are represented by the same association. So adjunct faculty, in in the instances that I'm talking about, would be members and represented by the same association that is representing residential faculty. Thus, the issues of interest to adjuncts and the interest of those of residential faculty are worked out in an arena other than sitting down with the administration to develop policies to be presented to the board. I think also, when the board made that original decision, the adjunct faculty were indeed an association, as the faculty, as the faculty association is an independent association. And I think that their shift now to being an internal employee council changes the dynamic here as well. I did want to ask a process question. In my time on the board, resolutions have come from the board, but it's sounding here like you're planning to have a resolution that is coming from the administration. Wouldn't it be more appropriate for this to come as an action item proposed by the administration to the board rather than a resolution? proposed by the administration to the board rather than a resolution?
Dr. Thor, I'm not sure to whom you're asking that question, but that's a very good point. For process, Dr. Gonzalez, I mean, is there an eye con, is there context that that could be, could occur?
President Sullivan and Dr. Thor, that's, that's certainly an avenue where we may be able to accomplish the request where this change has been presented here. That's going to require a little bit more research on my part unless my legal department has an answer off the top of their head that they're very comfortable and confident in. Otherwise, I would, I would request that we spend a little more time on that and get back to you on that approach.
I agree. Yeah, I don't have an answer for that question now, but I'm happy to look into that.
That was Ms. Bowman.
Yes, thank you.
And it may, it may be that prior to my time, there were resolutions that were generated by the administration. I just don't recall that there has been any in the last, you know, five years, five or six years.
Okay, so Dr. Gonzalez and Mr. Bowman, that's something that then we'll refer back to you for further investigation or diligence. And then let us know as this idea of changing the fact model a little bit comes forward or not.
Will do. President Sullivan, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Thor, you were president at the time and I really admired your leadership when I came on the board in keeping us informed and focused on this intention. And I know as a fellow board member and colleague that you understand the skeleton of this far more than some of us who came on and were newer. So I appreciate your comments this evening. Do you have any more?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Nguyen.
All I was going to say, thank you for the presentation. I do have a question. So if I'm understanding everything that we, I, I heard approximately fifty-fifty, so we have fifty percent full-time employees and fifty percent adjunct that are teaching our courses. So that's a question. And then I hear that there's technically four groups, so that public safety is also its own separate group. And, and those are my two questions.
So just for clarification, we have seventy-seven members within the entire body of employee representation. And there's three non-exempt, three exempt, and one sworn officer from each campus and including our district office. If that answers your question.
Well, we've got full-time faculty as a, maybe, maybe I'm misunderstanding.
This is just employees, classified staff.
We have employees, classified staff. We have full-time employees and we have adjunct employees, correct? Adjunct professors, correct? That we're representing. Okay.
But then within employee representation, we're just specifically your non-exempt exempt and your sworn officers.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. It just was, I just knew that they had a group and I just didn't see them represented. And I understand. I think I, the only thing that concerns me is procedurally. There's a lot of history to this with the fact group. I'm, I am honestly glad to hear how you've all worked together. Honoring the work that you do, it's, it's, if we don't have teachers and we don't have the administration of the college, we really don't have a college. So it has to work for those that are using it. I think my concern comes from that it looks like the decision was made by you to dissolve it. And then you're kind of coming to the board after the fact as opposed to, I don't feel like the board's involved. We're kind of hearing about it. So I just, I, I don't know that I agree with Dr. Thor, but I would say that I'd like to know the process for which we undo something that we as a board stated we wanted to do. And I appreciate the input and the thought that's gone into the presentation tonight. And that's all I have, Mrs. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mrs. Nguyen. With that, certainly, you know, having been part of only a few resolutions here, I know that we rely on the due diligence and, and investigation of the staff and by that I mean the complete staff, faculty, adjunct, employee groups, et cetera, to contribute to framing. And then at some point, as it did in this instance, it was synthesized into a resolution for us. But what I'm observing today is that there has been a lot of due diligence that has surfaced into this, these recommendations. Both then the provost and our chancellor have done their due diligence and are coming forward after reading position papers, conversation, et cetera, with a recommendation to the board. So I don't know that that's an unusual process or strategy, but I appreciate your inquiry around that effort, Mrs. Nguyen. And certainly we can take that up at one time. You asked or made the comment also about the fifty-fifty split between adjunct and residential. Ms. Train, can you tell me of the forty-nine point three percent adjunct which you, who you represent through an employee group, though I'm still curious what happened to the association and maybe you can fill that in too. How many of those, what, what is the average number of classes the adjuncts teach? Is it, do the majority do one? Do they do three? Do you have any sense of that for me, please?
And working collaboratively with our partners, this has been an education for me, serving both on fact and in the presidency. President Sullivan and members of the board, let me give a little bit of history also to the question on dissolution of the association. I became active with the fact group in August of 2019, came into the presidency July 1st of 2020. What I learned as I transitioned was really the association as a 501(c)(3) had not been an actively approved association for quite some time through the Arizona Corporation Commission. So the first thing that we did in working with the district and with the executive and general counsel office was to move from that previous 501(c)(3) status to the appropriate employee group. So that became effective in the first part of the fiscal year of 2020. And then as we moved forward, we've worked with our colleagues to learn through HRs, our district partners, offices of provost, just exactly how involved our adjunct faculty in the work of direct student instructional services. Dating to about 2018, the dashboard indications were the adjunct faculty were teaching about fifty-four percent of all classes. Then as we come forward on that dashboard, and that could be certainly provided to all of you, you could look at the history. Currently, it's forty-nine point three percent. There is a typical maximum course load per adjunct per semester of nine load hours. Traditionally, that might be three courses, three load hours per adjunct faculty. An exception to that right now is our nursing area of instruction. Because of the healthcare and pandemic dynamics in Arizona and of course throughout the U.S. and globally, there has been a request and we supported it, that faculty be allowed to teach in excess of a twelve load and that would be considered overload, so that there could be immediate rapid instruction and then more nurses, you know, becoming credentialed. I can answer personally that my load typically is teaching two classes per semester and that is six hours. But I think our colleagues probably in HR and Office of the Provost could give you an actual deliberate breakdown per college and that might be helpful.
Okay, now I, I'm really curious about, again, with four thousand adjuncts, I, I am very curious about that breakdown. And so then if we do talk about those four thousand, how many are part of, were part of your association that has verbally dissolved but exists today?
They, yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes, they are all active. There is not a dues-paying requirement. So we represent as an employee group those interests. And the breakdown as it is administered now as an employee group, we have two elected campus representatives per college. They serve staggered terms so that there is hopefully some continuity of coverage. Two individuals per college and there is remuneration of three load hours per semester for their service as a campus rep. We also have officers, president-elect, president, VP, secretary, VP, treasurer. So it's a very thin leadership team for that large number of adjunct faculty serving.
So you're functioning more like the employee group rather than the faculty association, which are in, in the number of people who do pay dues are represented to our active participants. Would, would that be a fair statement?
We, there is not a dues-paying requirement and all are welcome to participate. And we rely very much on those campus representatives for each college to be fully engaged with not only our academic affairs, but student affairs partners, the college administration, participation on committees, et cetera. But this is an employee group now as opposed to a 501(c)(3).
Okay, which does create some differences then between the faculty, with the faculty representation. All right. And so I really don't have too many other questions at this time. And I know we're fast approaching the conclusion of this work session. Board members, do you have any other comment or question at this time before, as we return to have Dr. Lysinski and Dr. Gonzalez frame our next steps? I hear silence, if that's possible. There is silence. So I think Dr. Gonzalez and Dr. Lysinski that we're at an end for this particular work session. And if there are further questions, we can either engage through the process of inquiry and response online or we can, if it merits, have another session on this topic. Does that work for you? Do you have any other comments?
That works for me, but it sounds like somebody was getting ready to speak. So I want to make sure that they do so before I close this out.
Don't hear anyone. So go ahead, please.
Okay. So I, I think that we have our, our next steps outlined and, and one of those being the make sure that we answer Dr. Thor's question around whether this is an action item or a resolution. And that in itself will dictate how we approach our next step. So we'll keep you informed and as you invited to do so, either through email or with the possible consideration of a work session if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. So I'm going to conclude our work session for the evening. At 6:30, we will convene our board meeting. Please stay connected through the site that you're on right now, as this is the board meeting location. So with that, I'll reconvene us at 6:30 and I adjourn our work session. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's 6:30 and would like to announce that we are live captioning our meeting. So please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link and please click on that to open a webpage with the live captioning. So at this time, I call to order the February 22, 2022 board meeting of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board. For the record, I will call roll call of the board members, noting that Mr. Quentin Evans is not with us. Moving on, Ms. Bitter Smith.
I'm here.
Thank you. Mrs. McGrath.
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Narini.
Present.
Ms. Smith. I believe she'll be delayed to her meeting if she's not jumping on right now. And with that, Dr. Thor.
Present.
Thank you. Mrs. Nguyen. Mrs. Nguyen. All right. So, and with my presence right now, I have five board members who have noted their presence. We are waiting for Ms. Smith, who may be delayed due to a previous commitment. And Mrs. Nguyen, please let me know when you're available. Okay, I just have a text that Ms. Smith is available. And, yes, and Mrs. Nguyen, you're available as well.
I said present when you said my name. Sorry, you didn't hear me.
Oh, I apologize. With that then, there are seven board members present. And also, could you have someone check with Ms. Smith about her technology connection there?
Yes, we'll do.
Okay, thank you. Moving on the agenda then after roll call is there are no substitutions at this time for tonight's meeting. And with that, we then move to the Faculty Executive Council Report presented by Dr. Revsich. Please, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Gather round the fire and let me tell you the story of the Festival of Tales. In 2010, residential faculty member Megan Kirk first taught a storytelling class for Paradise Valley Community College's Education Department. Professor Kirk saw how much effort her students were putting into the course and she didn't want all that hard work to go to waste. How could she get her students and audience worthy of their commitment? Her answer was to create the Festival of Tales. On one Saturday each semester, volunteers from local high schools and the community join with PVCC students, faculty, and staff to put on a festival promoting education and literacy for community children. In each of its first few semesters, the event drew about three hundred attendees. But enthusiasm is infectious and great ideas have a way of gathering momentum over time. When the childhood support nonprofit Southwest Human Development partnered with the festival, they brought more volunteers and more resources, donating six to eight thousand dollars worth of books per semester to the event. They also brought more community awareness to the festival and attendance grew to six hundred per event and then eight hundred and eventually a thousand. The next leap forward for the Festival of Tales came when Paradise Valley's Fine Arts Department joined the group. With their partnership, the festival added more community groups, new alumni participants, activity booths, live music, dance, theater, school group performances, food trucks, and more. By this point in its history, the event was drawing over two thousand participants per semester. And although attendance has dipped during the quarantine, each festival still draws over a thousand attendees. Today, Megan Kirk continues to lead the project with the help of Paradise Valley's Education Club and Education Program and with music facility Dr. Chris Cinto running the performance portion of the festival. The PV marketing team ensures that the event will draw a crowd and its facilities team works tirelessly in the background to keep everything flowing smoothly. Although the storytelling sessions remain at the heart of the festival, many other academic groups from the college have found ways to participate. As just a few examples, the library faculty host a literacy booth. The fine arts department have a clay ornament painting booth and a public art scavenger hunt. The science division puts on a microscope demonstration. And the health and exercise science department teaches children how to grow lima beans. The event runs for four to five hours and there's never a shortage of activities to keep the children's attention. The feedback from attendees supports this conclusion, with many families turning the festival into a much anticipated twice-a-year family tradition. Now, it would be easy to dismiss this event. That's nothing more than a day of fun and diversion for attendees. But doing so would miss the deep benefits that it provides to the community. Through the art of storytelling, the Festival of Tales teaches young children that reading can unlock the might that reading can unlock the might of understanding and imagination. Reading helps children develop problem-solving skills and enhances many important characteristics in a child, including curiosity, self-confidence, empathy, patience and morality. And of course, reading also leads to greater academic success. One final benefit the Festival, of the Festival of Tales is that by inviting young children to come to a college campus, it teaches them that college is a place where they belong. Too often, first-generation and underprivileged students view college as a domain reserved for the elite, not for themselves. By demystifying college when they're young, the festival breaks down the barriers to college access, showing the children and their, and their parents that college is attainable and inviting. When children from all backgrounds can see attending college as a viable path for themselves, the doors of higher education are opened to a much more diverse group of future students. This democratizes higher education. And it also helps to ensure that Paradise Valley Community College will always live up to its slogan, "A Great Place To Be." Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That was a great tale of tales. So thank you so much. With that, I want to note that the Adjunct Faculty Association Report was in our board packet and on board docs and it was submitted in writing. So Dr. Train does not require speaking time on our agenda this evening. Moving forward to the Employee Represent, Representation Update, excuse my stumble. Ms. Manje, Ms. Chandler, please go forward.
President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, member of CEC and guests. Myself, Shannon Manje and Anna Chandler here before you as the co-presidents for employee representation. And here is our February update. Next slide, please. We would like to give a shout out to Kim Grino, our interim chief financial officer. She has been doing a budget roadshow, if you will, explaining the budget process, the nuances that go into it in a manner as I've lovingly said to her that I can understand. So I'm pretty sure that means everybody across the district can understand. And it has been well received and well attended. And Kim, we cannot thank you enough for putting this effort into making the budget process knowledgeable to all across the district. I don't know, Elsa, if you can slide down just a little bit. I put some things in the corner of our slide. You guys have always said you really appreciate that we do these gratitudes and thank yous and welcoming's. There is ways you can do this as well. District HR has something called hashtag you matter. You can find this on our district employee portal where you can send thank you emails to your colleagues across the district just to show a note of gratitude. If that's something you'd prefer not to do, I have seen that handwritten thank you letters are still very much appreciated. And you can do that across your own site or across the district via inter-campus mail. I highly encourage everyone to take the time to show gratitude for one another. Next slide, please. A big congratulations to Dr. Nimoa, the interim Phoenix College President, who was named as the Asian Corporate and Entrepreneur Leaders Education Leader of the Year. We continue to see Dr. Nimoa's hard work in diversity, equity, inclusion and engagement. And we wanted to give him the shout out he deserves for this honorable achievement. Next slide, please. Another shout out of congratulations goes to Dr. Eric Lyschinsky. We know he is doing an awesome job serving as our interim provost right now. And we, as you saw from the chancellor's email, he will be serving as Scottsdale Community College's president in the next fiscal year. We know that Scottsdale employees and faculty are excited to have him in this role. And we look forward to the amazing things that he's going to bring to Scottsdale staff, faculty and especially their students. Next slide, please. Couple of updates from Anna and myself as we're preparing for the elections and self-nominations coming up in the next few months. We're going to be providing presentations and information to the chancellor's executive council, president's cabinet and the affinity groups. You all will be hearing from us to schedule dates and times for those presentations. We have now committed to meeting with the president's council on a monthly basis. We have been very, having very collaborative and informative conversations with that council. And we look forward to the growth of that relationship. A huge shout out goes to Human Resources as they hosted staff and faculty Equity Pay Town Halls last week. They were well-attended and well-structured. Thank you to Frank Wilson, Megan Tormi and their team for hosting those sessions. As well as, we do want to give a thank you to Chief Denglinger. He had the confidence to reach out to Employee Senate and Anna and myself regarding sworn officer equity pay. And we collaborated with Chief Denglinger and Human Resources to do an equity pay Q and A session for our sworn officers. Thank you so much for partnering with us and allowing us to build that collaborative relationship. Next slide, please. I now turn it over to my colleague, Anna Chandler.
Thank you, Shannon. As we have in each presentation, each month, we continue to highlight our representatives. These are our representatives from Mesa Community College. We have April Colson and Christine Greenie, Christina Greenie, excuse me, from our non-exempt council representation. I'll leave this up for just a moment here so you guys can read a little bit about them. Hopefully in these past few months, as we've brought in forth who our representatives are, you've been able to see the diversity of who we are as employee representation and just the different talent and expertise that reigns throughout the employee representation at this time. Next slide, please. This is Jim Hill, our sworn officer. Jim has been with us since what we jokingly say our E-GOC time of employee group organizational council. As we talked about our progress, he's been here in supporting and making sure sworn officers' voice has been heard. So we appreciate all three of your representation and supporting not only your campus and also at a district level as well. Next slide, please. For return to in-person and remote work, we continue to work thoroughly through this with our leadership and campus representatives. As per the request of the governing board, we do continue to get the remote and virtual work policy data at this time as nothing has changed since our last month's report out on that. But do want to highlight the chancellor's message that was provided in late January after the return from the winter break that just staff, if you are ill, just remain at home and just how important it is to keep all of us safe throughout our offices and when we return home to our families, et cetera. The COVID-19 telecommuting policy is still in effect. And understand that many campuses are working through this policy to make sure that staff are safe and still being able to do their jobs. Leave options, we are asking that staff do work with supervisor and local HR if there are any extenuating circumstances. And just also to make sure that you are reporting any cases of COVID-19 and ensuring that staff are being diligent with that as we continue to work through this pandemic together. And last but not least, we did share the link for Together Maricopa where you can find support in getting the resources that you need through all of this work. Next slide, please. We continue to also highlight our diversity, equity and inclusion. These are going to be some of the seminars that are being hosted throughout the next couple of months. Just continuing to encourage staff and all employees to attend these as they're very informative and really help connect us as a system and understanding the needs that not only our students need, but just us as staff and colleagues. So please, if you can attend these, these are very informative and have been well-received throughout the system as we continue to work through this. Jack, the Diversity Advisory Council is doing their awards of excellent nominations. And this year, we will be having a hybrid reception on March 25th at PVCC. Thank you so much. That is all for our report tonight. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. We appreciate your report. Moving on to Student Life Reports this evening, it's from Australia Mountain Community College. And so I'd like to welcome our Student Life and Leadership Representative, Mr. Herschel Jackson, Student Services Manager. Please join us this evening. Mr. Jackson.
Ms. Sullivan, if you would let me, perhaps Esperanza Cadena is on the call.
Okay, well, whomever's representing Australia, please join us.
Yeah, I'm here.
Please go ahead.
Good evening, President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, CEC and distinguished guests. My name's Esperanza Cadena and I am a student ambassador with the Office of Student Life and Leadership at a Chatham Mountain Community College. I'm happy to be here to give you a campus update on EMCC and to share the resources we offer. Next slide, please. Student Life and Leadership. The Office of Student Life and Leadership provides an environment which fosters the social, academic and professional growth and development of students. Student Life and Leadership is housed in the EMCC Student Union. Next slide, please. Student Life Services. The student food pantry provides non-perishable food items for students twice a week as well as food boxes upon request. The food pantry was initially located in an office space shared with the clothing boutique with less than 150 square feet. Based on the increased need to help counter student food insecurities along with an increase in usage, the decision was made to renovate an area of the Student Union to build a new food pantry. The new food pantry is located in the southeast corner of the Student Union. Next slide, please. As you could see, here's a 3D image of the old food pantry space to the left and on the right is the new renovated food pantry. The student clothing boutique called The Lions Exchange is where students can visit the boutique two times a month and receive up to four items of clothing each visit. This is an excellent resource for students to use if they have a class presentation or a job interview coming up. They can come to The Lions Exchange and receive free professional clothing for these occasions. The Lions Exchange also offers a variety of personal hygiene items, which are available for students to take for free. We also offer financial childcare assistance, discounted bus passes, campus tours and leadership development opportunities. Next slide, please. Clubs and Organizations. Currently, EMCC has 20-plus clubs and organizations. Some of the mini-clubs includes Phi Theta Kappa, Multimedia Club, Drama Club, Writing Club, Step Club, Future Teachers Club. I am a member of the Psychology Club and Phi Theta Kappa. Next slide, please. As you could see, here are more clubs on campus. Next slide. Past Programs and Events. And now for program and event, past events include Fall 2021 and Spring 2022 Welcome Week events, our annual Caesar Travis event for Hispanicary fifth month virtually. Coffee Talk with the Dean, Student Rights and Responsibilities. Holiday Angel Drive for Children in Need of Gifts. The drive's for 23 families and 68 children. As you can see, some of the events, the empty eye club, John Rock, Psychology Club, Human Trafficking 101 webinar and EMCC Gaming Club, Game Day. Next slide, please. Virtual Resource. Since the pandemic, Student Life has developed virtual resources and educational pages for students. For Fall 2021 and Spring 2022, they've hosted a virtual Welcome Meet Resource Page. Next slide. The Virtual Resource Page. Our Welcome Week page features COVID-19 updates, the welcome video from the EMCC president, instant campus resources, history success and online basic needs and emergency assistance. The EMCC Virtual Bookstore, Virtual Training Services and Online Library Resources. The Resource Page also features information and videos from clubs and organizations, virtual events and provide fitness and wellness tips and information. Next slide, please.
I think we're having some technical difficulties. I don't know if it's at our end or your end. And this is such good information, we want to make sure that we get it all. So did anyone move or can we try again? Not from the beginning, just the last, this last slide. Let's go forward and see where we are.
Oh, back to virtual resource?
Oh, no, this is fine. You came in clearly now. So let's try upcoming programs and events.
Okay, so upcoming programs and events. As part of our Back History Month programming, we'll be hosting the Martin Luther King Junior Event, Fighting the Good Fight, tomorrow, February 23rd, virtually. A coffee talk to be scheduled with administration soon. Coffee talks provide an opportunity for students to engage in dialogue with the EMCC administration, the vice president, president and the deans. Women's History Month and Student Appreciation Day. Next slide, please. And finally, athletics. Before the X for Athletics includes a team week seeking to increase the fall to spring retention rates of student athletes from 75% to 82% by January 2022. The lead measure was to establish communication with each student athlete on a weekly basis and to provide the necessary support to ensure college success. To accomplish this lead measure, we created the Student Athlete Canvas Course. The Canvas Course consists of three modules, Student Success, Athletic Eligibility and Resources/Services. The Student Success Module contains information on SMART goals, success strategies and classroom etiquette. Resources and services cover the different campus departments for students to utilize to be successful. At the end of each module, there is a quiz that each student athlete must pass. Another method of providing support for student athletes virtually is the creation of the Student Athlete Update Form. It must be submitted once every week and is submitted directly to the athletic director. Once the form, the form athletes provide classroom progress reports for each class as well as reports specific to athletes, as well as any issues or updates that are happening off-campus with the student athlete that will impact their student experience. This form is used as a method for athletic directors to stay in contact with the student on a weekly basis. As of January 2022, the EMCC student athletes had a 90% fall to spring retention rate. The 2021 fall season is underway and EMCC has six members on the men's team and five members on the women's team. The 2021 men's team finished at the NJCAA Region 1 Division 1 Team Runner-Up, qualifying as the team to commit at the NJCAA Division 1 National Championship. For the first time in program history, both men and women's teams should contend to qualify this year. And then next slide. Thank you very much for your time. This is the Student Life Report for Chatham Mountain Community College.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciated all the information. Sounds like you're really busy over there. So thank you again. Moving on to our next agenda item, emeritus awards and recognition. We have three this evening. And so as we began, begin to continue our processes across our system where we've been returning to recognizing the outstanding contributions of our faculty as they retire from our system. We're doing this again online. So we want to note that we will include an article recognizing the recipients in the Maricopa newsletter that will include a short profile of each of the award winners this evening. Our board assistant Elsa will forward the newsletter to all of the recipients. We're hopeful that someday, and we will, we'll create a celebration of a more formal manner to recognize all of our emeritus award winners over the last few years. So congratulations to the three of you this evening. Now, Dr. Gonzalez, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, I do. President Sullivan, thank you for the opportunity. President Sullivan, members of the board, or CEC and guests that are with us this evening. I'd like to provide you an update on some of the legislative activity that's been going on with, within our district and working closely with our state legislature. The state legislature has completed its 44th day of the session and, and over 1,800 bills, memorials and resolutions have been introduced. Last week was the final week for the bills to be heard in committees in their chamber of origin, which means hundreds of bills expired because they did not get a hearing in time for this important deadline. which means hundreds of bills expired because they did not get a hearing in time for this important deadline. Maricopa has continued to advocate for two bills that align with the board's legislative priorities. Specifically Senate Bill thirteen seventy-four, which modernizes the Community College Expenditure Limitation Formula, and House Bill twenty seventeen, which reinstates ongoing STEM formula funding for our colleges. We also continue to monitor and work through these issues, including House Bill twenty thirty-four, which authorizes C Teds to offer associate degrees, and House Bill twenty thirty-nine, which caps dual enrollment tuition rates in statute. Last week was a really busy week. At the Capitol of Maricopa, we had several college presidents and board members visit the state Capitol to meet with legislators and advocate for our board's legislative priorities. We also had a great legislative reception last month at the Phoenix Forge Makerspace where ten legislators stopped by to see this incredible new district asset. It's been a busy legislative session, but I'm extremely proud of the enhanced engagement of our board members and our college leadership in the legislative process. I want to thank everyone who has participated in these activities since the start of legislative session. That concludes my report, President Sullivan.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. So tonight on our agenda, as usual, we move to citizens interim. Tonight, we do actually have someone who would like to present. Given the nature of how we're doing this, I will be reading the person's submission on that comment. But before we do that, I'd like to read our guidelines for citizen interim. So this is an opportunity for members of the public to address the governing board. In compliance with the open meeting law, or the governing board will neither discuss nor take action on issues raised during this portion of the agenda, unless they're already noted. When necessary, issues will be taken under advisement and placed on subsequent agendas. Presenting concerns to the board and the free expression of ideas should be communicated with decorum and respect, and civil or disorderly conduct is not permitted. The use of derisive or insulting language or the direction of remarks that defame, attack, or harass an individual may serve as cause for the board's president to direct the speaker, in this case, I'll be reading, so none of that will happen, immediately conclude his or her remarks. Each person submitting for citizens interim is allowed a three-minute time limit. And given our current state of affairs, we have individuals forward their comments to the board and the assistant to our governing board office, and then subsequently, when noted, I, as board president, will read them during this evening's meeting. So tonight, we have a letter from Mr. Jay Sights. He's a District Four constituent. So I'm going to read his comments to the board this evening. Good evening, my name is Jay Sights, and I am a concerned citizen in District Four. I am a parent of students who have attended dual enrollment at EMCC. I respectfully submit the following statement. I am strongly opposed to agenda item G one to spend seven hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars with SDB construction on touchless plumbing devices. Number one, the premise of the upgrade is due to COVID nineteen transmission concerns, which is a hasty generalization. The CDC website, in fact, debunks the risk of surface transmission. Quote, people can be infected with SARS-CoV-2 through contact with services. However, based on available epidemiological data and studies of environmental transmission factors, surface transmission is not the main route by which SARS-CoV-2 spreads, and the risk is considered to be low, unquote. Therefore, the installation of these devices will have a near zero impact on transmission of the illness when the surfaces are clean, regular by janitorial staff, and when people are already using good hygiene practices. Number two, inflation combined with lowered student retention and recruitment means that we're spending more dollars per student per credit with poorer outcomes. This is the wrong direction, and we must be responsible to the taxpayers to operate a highly efficient institution. Number three, consider that three hundred and sixty-one water valves are being replaced. How many of these still have useful life remaining? akin to the federal government removing two regulations when one is introduced, consider requiring every investment to produce a long-term financial benefit to the taxpayers. Instead of appropriating three-quarters of a million dollars for an extravagant upgrade, perhaps complete the necessary repairs and consider investing the remaining dollars in another way to reduce recurring costs. For instance, building solar panels, shade structures to offset utility costs and provide cooler outdoor spaces for students to congregate, which has the added benefit of reducing virus transmission. Thank you for your service to Maricopa County for being stewards of our hard-earned tax dollars and for prioritizing educational outcomes for our students. Please vote now on agenda item G one. Respectfully, Jay Sights. With that, thank you, Mr. Sights, for your input this evening. Moving then from citizens interim to our next item on the agenda. We're going to move to consider our consent agenda items. All items under this section of the agenda are consent matters unless they were removed from the consent agenda at this time. Do any board members or the chancellor wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Hearing your comments, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Norene. So there's been a motion to made in second to approve the consent agenda. All in those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Being none, with all board members present, the consent agenda is approved. We now move to our non-consent action item, and that is approval to issue a job order contracting purchase order in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents to SDB construction for installation of touchless plumbing devices at Phoenix College. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Thank you, Dr. Norene, is there a second on the motion? I'll second for discussion. Discussion on the motion. Any discussion?
I think that this is Mrs. Nguyen.
Yes, go ahead.
I think that the citizen kind of clearly outlined why it wasn't a good purchase. And that with all the other things that we absolutely need to do for the college system, I don't know why this has become a priority. And it's maybe it just doesn't seem to me to be a necessity, and I think that I would agree with the citizen and his comments was all I had to add.
Thank you, is there any other comments on the motion? For discussion, yes, go ahead.
I agree with Ms. Nguyen. This is an unnecessary expenditure, especially at this time in our budget crisis, and I see no need for us to make improvements in our water delivery system on Phoenix College campus.
Thank you, is there any other discussion?
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Thor.
Yes.
Because this is using HIRF dollars, I understand why it's being introduced as a best practice to prevent the spread of COVID nineteen and other contagious diseases. But I'm wondering if there are other reasons that this recommendation is being made, such as the age of the existing devices or any ADA issues. I'd like a fuller explanation of why the college and CDAC believes that this is justified.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez, is there someone who can answer Dr. Thor's questions or comment?
President Sullivan, Dr. Thor, thank you for your question, I will defer to doctor, or excuse me, Ms. Grineo, our interim chief financial officer, and she may also include Dr. Klein Namu, our interim president, Phoenix College, to offer response.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez, and yes, I am going to defer to Dr. Namu.
Okay, got it, thank you, Kim. Good evening, everyone, President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of the C E C, and guests with us tonight, my name is Klein Namu, and I currently serve as the interim president of Phoenix College. I'm happy to share some information about this project and have asked our exceptional director of operations, Doug McCarthy, to be available for questions, so Doug, if you're out there, just kind of a heads up in regard to the ADA and age of fixtures and plumbing fixtures that are part of this initiative, I would offer a couple of things before handing it over to Doug. This project proposes to essentially modernize our water filling stations, drinking fountains, faucets, and other fixtures to be touchless, to create a safer experience for our students. Very similar to the contactless experiences you all have most likely experienced at other public facilities or events. We've certainly seen a proliferation of contactless technologies and strategies in response to the pandemic, and offer this project for your consideration as one that aims to create safe spaces for our students, employees, and community members who frequent our campus. Dr. Thor, to your question, I would invite our director of operations, Doug McCarthy, to to provide some more detail.
Thank you, Dr. Namu, President Sullivan, and Dr. Thor. To answer your question directly, Dr. Thor, we have plumbing devices that are up to thirty years old, now that said, we keep them in good operating condition. We do have some more modern buildings that we have installations of touchless devices already, so they are not included in this. And so it does, as as Dr. Mu laid out, it certainly does address the touchless technology and the safety factors and the convenience, as well as replacing some aged devices with new modern water-saving devices.
Thank you, this is Ms. Sullivan, building on Dr. Thor's questions. So when you're saying there's a cost savings involved in this, using new equipment, can you talk to that to some degree? And the impact of this shift, recognizing again, these are HIRF dollars, I appreciate the verbiage around this, but is there more to it than just using HIRF dollars for the sake of using HIRF dollars?
No, it was an opportunity for us to go through and look at various systems around the campus. As you already know, I'm sure we are replacing, for instance, some air conditioning systems with HIRF money that were out of compliance for ventilation. So it's along the same lines of campus improvement. All of the devices that we're that we're proposing here are the most modern low-flow plumbing devices per the plumbing codes. And so they will save us water. I have not done a calculation as to how much. We could certainly do that and come back to the board with that calculation.
I'll move forward on the motion and see if that's necessary. Is there any more discussion on this motion or questions, board members? Not hearing any, I'm going to move the motion forward. So all in favor, this is gonna be a little more difficult, I think, but all in favor, please vote by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
So I've heard three, four ayes. Okay, maybe I better do this through real call. Okay, so Ms. Bitter Smith, are you still with us this evening? I know she had to step away for another situation. Okay, Mrs. McGrath?
I vote no.
Thank you. Dr. Norene? Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Dr. Thor?
Aye.
Ms. Nguyen?
Nay.
And I vote aye, so the motion will carry with four ayes in favor and two nays opposed. So G one stands approved at this time. Thank you. Moving forward on the agenda, then, we have first read and information items on employment and separations, December twenty-five, twenty-one through January twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, are there any comments or questions for this evening's discussion? Being none, we move to the item I on monitoring reports. Budget analysis report fund one, are there any comments or questions on this item? Being none, let's move to community reports, I'll start with you, Mrs. McGrath.
I don't have a report at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Norene?
Yes, I just wanted to, thank you. I just want to echo what Dr. Gonzalez said earlier about our trip to the Capitol this last week, and we met with several senators and representatives to lobby for for the cause of the district, so I thought that was great. I just wanted to do a shout out to Lori Lindenberg for some of her help that she gave me with some data that I was needing, so she did a wonderful job of that. And just wanted to wish everybody a happy African-American history month and encourage everybody to attend some of the and participate in the events that are coming up, the Black Woman Walking Event at Shrem Mountain coming up this week. And then just remind everybody that the Diversity Advisory Council is calling for nominations for for the Awards of Excellence this year, so with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Norene, Ms. Smith?
Thank you. I wanted to say that I am looking forward to participating virtually in the Glendale Community College H L C site reaccreditation visit. I know a lot of work goes into that process, so I just wanted to let folks at GCC know that I'm looking forward to celebrating the work that you've done leading up to that visit and appreciate the preparation materials that were sent in advance of board members participating in that session. And I am also looking forward to the governing board retreat on March eleventh, and some of our time will be set aside for some continued discussion related to policy, and I'm looking forward to connecting with board members on those topics. That concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, Dr. Thor?
Thank you. This has been a very busy month. On January thirty-first, I was honored to speak at the dedication of the Dr. John Cordova Plaza Paradise Valley Community College. That same evening, along with others, I attended the legislative reception at Phoenix Forge Makerspace. February sixteenth, I joined Dr. Norene and Ms. Sullivan for the MCCD lobbying day at the Capitol. That evening through February the eighteenth, I attended the Community College Baccalaureate Association Conference in Tucson. I was honored to be asked to present the association's pioneer award to Representative Becky Nutt in recognition of her leadership in obtaining baccalaureate authority for Arizona's community colleges. I was also the conference's closing keynote speaker. I shared lessons learned in my twenty-five-year quest for the community college bachelor's degree. I also want to acknowledge the outstanding session presented by Maricopa's Baccalaureate Leadership Team. They made us very proud. And in addition to the the reaffirmation team visiting Glendale Community College at the end of this month, I also want to acknowledge that a team will be visiting Rio Salado College that very next day. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Thor, Ms. Nguyen?
I just wanted to use my time tonight to congratulate Dwayne Oaks.
I just wanted to use my time tonight to congratulate Dwayne Oaks, who received his emeritus status. And we don't know when we're going to do this in person, and he is on the call. And Dwayne served basic community college for over thirty years and did an amazing job of getting students through the honors program there and getting them connected to scholarships and the many students' lives that he's changed. He, that program under his leadership thrived by the Kappa. And I just want him to know that as someone who loved his students, contributed to the city of Mesa, basic community college has big shoes to fill. Dwayne, and I just want to congratulate you on retiring and the amazing service that you provided to our community college system. And it's been a privilege to work with you and to know you. And I have no other report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. I also want to add just kudos to all of those that are receiving recognition for their, as a faculty emeritus distinction recipient. And we will, I promise, sometime soon, or maybe in a couple of months, get together and have that celebration. I also want to acknowledge my presence at the legislative reception that was held in the Makerspace. And wow, what a place. It's exciting. There was a lot going on. It's really tied closely to workforce development. Was pleased to have so many representatives there, our legislative representatives, as well as the governor's office was represented. I think that, want to congratulate all the folks that put that together, and it was a lovely evening. Legislative Day was dynamic and long and appreciated the recognition in the galleries of our community college. So was glad to participate with that. And also I will be attending the accreditation learnings and experience and conversations both at Glendale Community College in Rio and like to both support and echo Ms. Smith's comments around the prep and the opportunity to engage in that. So board members, as we move forward into our next meeting dates, it looks like we will most likely have a gender review on March eighth. Realize that's not already on your calendars, but it seems that given the next following week as spring break would be advisable for us to do that. And Mrs. McGrath, that puts us two weeks from the board meeting, so we'll be doing that on the eighth of March. March eleven is our governing board retreat. We have a lot of ground to cover, and I'm really appreciating these opportunities and your time to dedicate to our professional development and expanded experience and knowledge and how this district works and our role in contributing to its outcomes and success. So keep that in mind. And then our board meeting will be on March twenty-second at regular board meeting time, six-thirty. I expect there will be a work session attached to that. And so plan on a four-thirty or five o'clock start time that evening. With that, I'd like to adjourn our meeting on two twenty-two, twenty-two. Wish you all a nice evening, and we'll hear each other soon. Thank you, everyone, and good night.